Good afternoon, everyone. Today is September 24th, 2024. It's 2:00 P. M. This is a city council study session for the city of Prescott, and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Kentelme.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
Present.
Councilman Montoya.
I am here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusi.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilwoman Freeworth is excused from the meeting.
We have one item on our study session agenda today. City Clerk, would you like to read that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Discussion and presentation from Peter DeCressel regarding workforce housing options, concepts, and opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor Good and members of the council for giving me this opportunity to present to you Breaking Housing Matters, which is a solution to provide affordable housing profitably. Breaking Housing Matters is an Arizona 501(c)(3), and I am a resident of Prescott. I live out on Brenda Trail and have presented this to various cities that are very pro-housing in Vermont and Massachusetts. And one of the questions I was always asked there is how come you haven't presented it to your home city or county? So I am glad to announce that last week I did present it to the Yavapai Board of Supervisors, and I am thankful to you all for giving me this opportunity to present it to you. Workforce housing in my book is not limited to first responders and teachers. All housing is workforce housing. Everyone working in Prescott and every other community in the country is part of the workforce housing sector. It is important to house teachers and first responders. It is just as important to house everyone else that sustain and maintain a community. Baristas, salespeople, doctors, lawyers, construction workers, garbage collectors, janitors, farmers, the list is endless, that make a community. A community needs everyone that makes the community. That is why my proposal of building of Breaking Housing Matters provides affordable housing that can be built profitably for everyone, buyers, renters, and homeless. But my focus is on buyers and renters. You received a copy of my book called Custom Made Housing for New World Disorder. The book was put together with my advisory board that are mentioned on page six of the book, which included community housing development directors, state treasurers that financed housing, architects, builders, social workers. All five individuals listed there were part of my advisory team. We spent almost four years coming up with a plan that would be quote-unquote "bulletproof." The one sheet I gave to every one of you along with the book, the one sheet that is here spells out at the very beginning what breaking housing is at its core. And at its core, it is a proposal that first and foremost creates a partnership between the private sector and public sector, rather than just being run by the public sector. All housing projects in the U.S. today are run by a public sector. And that is one of the reasons I believe that we face the crisis we do. The other core elements of Breaking Housing Matters is that no one should have to spend more than 25% of their income for either rent or a mortgage. And most importantly, it is apolitical. When an administration changes, the people that run the housing project should not change, which is what happens today after every election. It should be also a program that is run by the private sector. It should be run by either a real estate executive or a banking executive with real estate experience. But all five stakeholders in Breaking Housing Matters, which include government officials from the city, county, state, and federal level if necessary, the philanthropies and charities, landlords, developers, bankers, and religious organizations, all of which I will get into, their core contribution can be represented at the board level and management. But the key is, it's a partnership between public and private sector and is apolitical because housing has become very, very political. The five stakeholders, which are on the bottom of the page of the handout that I've given you, spells out that first and foremost, Breaking Housing Matters starts at the municipal level because all housing starts with local ordinances and local policies that are set by the city council. The city council or the city administration or county can then work and coordinate the funds they receive, whether it's from the county, state, or the federal government. One of the things I emphasized at the county board of supervisors' hearing because they have a project there that they're working on, basically farming. How do you have reproductive regrowth in farming so that a community can sustain itself in a crisis such as COVID? And the question I raise is, why does the government spend, the federal government, over $300 billion a year on farm, two farmers not to grow? Why not take some of that money and seed housing, even on agricultural land, which the vice board of supervisors person who has proposed a plan found very interesting, and I'm in discussions working with her on that? The federal government has money for housing that is streamlined all the way down locally, but it's up to the city, county, and state to put that into what I call the Housing Subsidy Fund, which I spell out in detail in the book and I'm happy to discuss. The second stakeholders are philanthropies, foundations, and charities. To date, they do not contribute to housing. Foundations are actually barred by the federal tax laws from contributing to housing. Don't ask me why, but it's there. And that's one of the things that has to change. Foundations, charities that I have talked to are very happy to contribute to the cause because they see the crisis, but they don't see any reason to contribute to it today because there's no viable program as far as they are concerned. They are the second stakeholder of the five I mentioned. The third stakeholders are landlords and developers. A percentage of their profit, whether it's 1% or 2%, as you well know, today you have what's called millionaires' taxes in several jurisdictions around the country. Where every home sold over a certain price, 5 million or more, a percentage goes into a city fund to house the homeless. I'm saying, why limit that to millionaires? Why not every home, but the individual that contributes that small percentage not only gets a tax break, but if they're a landlord and a developer, they qualify for any one of the numerous grants the government has out there for them. In addition to that percentage, all big developers and landlords have charities. Interestingly enough, they give to every cause but housing, education, pets, children, all good causes. But why not housing? It doesn't make sense to me. And when I talk to them, they say, "Good question. If we got a break?" I said, "You already have a tax break. It's a charity." Because my background is, I have represented, as I point out on the inside back cover of the book you have, my background as a lawyer in L.A. in the '70s was representing landlords, developers. And I wrote the law governing landlords and tenants in mobile home parks, both in California and Nevada. And I am also a former banker, so I understand how bankers and developers think. The fourth stakeholders are bankers and financial institutions. Most of the money they make comes from construction loans, mortgages, or underwriting bonds. Again, why shouldn't a percentage, a number of basis points, go into the Housing Subsidy Fund that will subsidize the difference between the 25% that no renter or buyer should pay? Same thing, a few basis points. And oh, yeah, financial institutions also have charities that give to every good cause but to housing. Give them the incentive to do so. They're happy to do so if they see a program that makes sense. The fifth and final contributor to the Housing Subsidy Fund are houses of worship. All religious institutions get a tax-exempt status. One of the requirements and conditions of that tax-exempt status is to, quote, "provide housing for the needy." Many do. I believe others can do more. And a percentage of the money that they receive in donations, the percentage to be determined by each local jurisdiction, should go towards the Housing Subsidy Fund. Large national organizations that have millions, if not billions, should give a lot more than the local pastor who is struggling to basically keep the doors open. We have to look very objectively from nothing to a reasonable percentage to be decided by each jurisdiction. Getting those five stakeholders involved is not that difficult if the local government and municipality insists on it. By doing so, the housing subsidy solution that I am proposing, which will be funded by the Housing Subsidy Fund, can actually go into effect. There are three cities in Vermont that are looking at it seriously, one city in Massachusetts, and hopefully Prescott. The basic foundation that I want to emphasize is that nobody pays more than 25% of their income. Because then the rest of their income, because as you well know today, some people pay up to 80% of their income for housing. A lot of the people that are homeless today have full-time jobs. They're white-collar workers. They're not all drug addicts or recovering alcoholics. The numbers are staggering. The total number of homeless is close to 700,000 nationally, and the higher percentage of several million housing insecure people are gainfully employed and afraid of losing their homes. I've given a brief description on the second page of the handout I gave you of the benefits to the community if people are limited to spending 25% of their income to housing. The rest of the money is spent in the community, whether it's shopping, whether it's going to restaurants, and that's how a community benefits and grows. It's a program that I believe not only maintains but sustains a community. But again, it has to start at the local city level, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have on any of the details I've spelled out, which have been brief because I only had 15 minutes, and I believe I got it all in.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming and speaking to us today. As a longtime resident of Prescott, I've often thought that there are areas within the Prescott city limits that would be appropriate for workforce housing, but they're currently used for industrial businesses, like off of Sixth Street, Merritt Avenue, Easy Street. I mean, they're places like right in town, really close to downtown, in fact, that are like zoned industrial. And I've often thought, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could do like a land swap and move some industrial uses out of the downtown area, maybe out towards the airport, which is designated as an industrial area? How would you see that as a possibility from a financing perspective? Because I think that would be very costly to try to do a land swap, but it seems like the housing should be more in town than on the periphery of town and get the industrial out of town and put it on the periphery of town.
I think you're quote-unquote right on the money. I think most industrial buildings, even if they were to be retained to minimize the cost of conversion, can, depending on the type of building and size of building, can be reconfigured into mixed use. They can be apartments for rent. They can be condominiums for sale, and they can be dorms for baristas and local people that don't have to commute two hours to get to work. So it's looking at housing also in a new light. It's not just apartments here, condos there. It's mixed use, where everybody stays in town. And dorms for baristas, they don't need fancy apartments. They can be like college dorms. They can have a common dining room, common bathrooms in a section of the quote-unquote "industrial" building. The industrial building itself, or owners, for the right tax breaks and money, they'll be happy to move. It's just a question of how you time it and how you fund it, and bankers are happy to finance it.
If you look at Prescott, the area between Sheldon, basically from where about Washington Avenue all the way down to Pleasant Street, maybe a little further, that area north of Sheldon Street is predominantly industrial. I mean, there's some housing in there. But I've often thought that would be a great area to put housing in.
I agree with you, and that's why everything starts at the city level, because local zoning is controlled by the city. It's not controlled by the county or the state. And that is why I am here, because I think what you are suggesting, Councilman, is an ideal place to do exactly what you are proposing, and it can accommodate the people that are essential for the future growth of this city.
Councilman Gambogi.
Mr. DeCressel, I want you to know that this weekend I was limited in the amount of football I could watch because I read your book.
Thank you.
Cover to cover. I was still able to watch Rutgers beat Virginia Tech and the Eagles beat the Saints. As I started reading your book, I was burning through my highlighter. So I did something I've never done before. I sat down, I put together Excel spreadsheet, which I have 25 questions, but bear with me, I'd like to ask 25. I read a lot of books, and the titles go something like Shogun, Tai Pan, King Rat. I'm currently reading Good Energy. Your book says custom-made housing for the new world disorder. It's a word sound that troubles me a little bit. How did you choose the word "made," M-A-I-D, versus M-A-D-E?
I believe because we are in a world in crisis, not just here in Arizona and America, that it is up to we, the people, who I consider maids, that are constantly asked to clean up the mess that people face. But we are then, if you excuse the expression, dumb enough to pay for the cleanup job. And as someone who has access to very cheap maids in Asia, I have yet to find a maid that pays me for the privilege of cleaning up my mess. So why is it that we, the people, the taxpayers, are constantly asked to clean up the mess Washington imposes on us and then pay for the privilege in the form of taxes? So that's why I think we, the people as a whole, have been maids on many policies, to clean them up, housing being the one that has to be cleaned up if we are to solve the crisis.
On page six, you say that the common anger of the January 6 riots was a lack of affordable housing. Now, in your book, you say there's no attribution, but where'd you come up with that idea?
A lot of the people that were in Washington on January 6, including the shaman from our home state of Arizona, were homeless. They lived with their parents. They went there. They are angry. And the shaman from Arizona was unfortunately the representative of the homeless that were there and was made the symbol of the protest. Many people that were there were homeless that went there to basically protest the lack of housing, which has been lost in the media.
It must have been lost because I've never heard of that. I thought it was a protest over the election results.
That was the main reason, but there were many other causes that people came there to protest, not just the election.
I'm going to get to a more important question, but I wanted, this one intrigued me because I think when you write, it's important to be credible because if we accept one part of the argument, sometimes we accept all of it. On page 33, you said climate change is an existential threat to people and housing, and that the sea levels will rise 6 to 7 feet. That sounds a lot like Al Gore. He predicted 20 feet, so that's in the ballpark. But when I go to attribution, I see that in 2007, the International Panel on Climate Change, an organization composed of scientists, policymakers around the world who monitor human-caused climate change, estimated that sea levels would rise 0.18 to 0.6 meters, that's roughly less than 2 feet, over the next 100 years. So why would you make this claim that the sea levels would rise 6 to 7 feet, or 6 to 7 meters?
All you have to do is look at the insurance companies' reports and what they are now charging, if you can get insurance in any of the sea coastal areas in the country. And all you have to do is look at the recent floods and hurricanes and all the, literally hundreds of thousands of people that have been made homeless as a result of the recent storms and floods, not just in the U.S. But look at what's going on in Central Europe today, in Czechoslovakia, Czech Republic, Germany. The floods are wiping out towns. So I am looking at reports made by insurance companies that, A, are no longer issuing insurance to homes in coastal areas because of the high cost and hits they have taken the last 3 to 5 years to the tune of hundreds of billions of dollars.
As I understand it, people in Florida have a hard time getting insurance today because of hurricanes. I've not heard anyone mention anything about the rise in the sea levels.
Well, the hurricanes create sea levels to rise, as do some of the heavy rainfalls, that after a hurricane, when wetlands, because many of the wetlands that have been quote-unquote "built over" or reconfigured, once the water rises, it has no place to go, so it winds up sitting there and flooding whatever has been built there.
I'm kind of rooting for a sea level change so I could have seafront property, oceanfront property. On page 86, you mentioned workforce housing, and you say it serves the middle class. That's three paragraphs dedicated to workforce housing, and our objective is to solve workforce housing, as distinguished from your definition of affordable housing. As I read in the book, affordable housing is for homeless, and you call, I think you call it illegal immigrants. I call it illegal aliens. You got three paragraphs out of 144 pages in the book dedicated to workforce housing. What are we to learn about workforce housing from the book, then?
Well, if you look closely at those paragraphs, I talk about mill towns, for example, that are converted to workforce housing, or even companies like Tesla building old, basically factory towns, no different than what Ford did or others have done, where they provide the housing for their workforce. And again, this is a book and a concept. Breaking Housing Matters is an ongoing work in process. The first book that I wrote on the subject, the first draft, was limited to renters. And the focus here is anything but on illegal immigrants and homeless because they are a minority, but they are there and have to be addressed. My focus is on buyers and renters, not the homeless, the 700,000, or the millions of illegal immigrants. I just point out that it is an issue that has to be addressed, but it's not one that I focus on. I just pointed out.
My last question. In follow-up to what you just said, on page 126, you said illegal immigrants need to be housed. Why would we house illegal immigrants?
To eliminate crime for openers. They can be housed in Mexico. They don't have to be housed in America. They've got to be housed somewhere. Leaving them unhoused creates not only crime, but very unsanitary conditions, and it is an issue that has to be addressed. It can no longer be ignored. It's an issue, as when I worked with Ronald Reagan, immigration laws were passed to address the issue. Illegal aliens or immigrants, whatever you want Illegal aliens or immigrants, whatever you want to call them, that issue has to be addressed.
Returning them to their home country, is that a solution? Returning them to their home country, is that a solution?
Of course, it's a solution, but if they're not going to be returned, what are we going to do with them?
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, thanks for coming. You know, the thing that struck me about when I was reading your book is the worldly concept view. I'm very well-traveled myself. I grew up in the military and lived in all those, a lot of the countries that you spoke about, and I do appreciate that. A lot of people, I think, that as we grow up in this idyllic community of Prescott, Arizona, and we're here in the United States of America, they forget how what's happening in the larger communities affects all of us. We're a microcosm of that. So bringing it back down here, the workforce housing issue that we have currently here in Prescott, and I know you live here, so you probably see it as well as the rest of us do. And I generally agree with what you've got here. So I'm struggling with, and I am the workforce housing liaison for the council, and I've been in on the committee meetings since the beginning, and we have talked about everything. We're exploring all of this, because I believe, and I think many of the members do, it's not one solution, it's going to be a combination of many solutions.
Correct, I agree.
So if I'm looking at your involvement here, the five steps to your community involving the government, foundations, landlords, developers, real estate, financial institutions, and religious houses of worship, this is my problem, and I've had a lot of people contact me and urging me, because I'm involved with the city, that the city is to handle this problem. Somehow, we need to be able to handle it. The city doesn't have the, and again, this is my opinion, we not only don't have the finances, I don't think we have the political will to do the things it's going to take for the city to be able to handle this problem 100%. It's just not going to happen. In what you've done and where you've spoken, are you finding, and you can say no, are you finding that it's going to have to take the private sector to solve this problem? In the way either, you know, you mentioned a 501. You know, I came out of the private sector, I came out of the building industry, where time is money, you make things happen. I'm retired, and now I've decided to give back, and I'm here working for the city. Government is frustrating. It's very difficult to get anything done, because there's all the hurdles that we have to jump over, because we're handling taxpayers' dollars. So in your opinion, how does this get done? And do you recommend that this goes out to the private sector with the city helping facilitate it? We, right now, are receiving a grant, and many of the members of the Workforce Housing Committee are urging the city to hire a full-time person devoted just to this subject. Do you think that that's going to be successful? Have you ever seen that work anywhere? And what is the involvement percentage-wise that the private sector has solved this problem?
As a former consultant, practicing lawyer who advised many cities and states and governments, I find sometimes it's a lot of wasted money on consultants, and I speak that, say that from experience. That is why I said it has to be a partnership between the private sector and government, and it starts at the city level, but the funding that comes to the city comes from either the county, usually the state and federal government, because all taxes wind up, or the majority of taxes, I should say, wind up at the federal and state level. So it is up to the city to get the federal and state government to work with it, to help finance the ordinances or the conversion of industrial buildings to residential buildings, and then get the private sector, the landlords, developers, banks, charities, all of whom are happy to do so if there is a law and a mechanism that enables them to participate, contribute, and yes, in return, they do get a tax break or other grants to build, to continue building more, financial institutions to finance more construction, more mortgages, more underwriting of bonds for infrastructure, roads, whatever. You're right, it cannot be done by a city alone. It has to be a partnership with the city, county, state, federal government, on the government level, the first stakeholder, and then with the private sector in terms of landlords, developers, and financial institutions, and then with charitable and religious institutions. We get all the primary stakeholders in any community to get involved, share, and participate, because everyone acknowledges there is a housing crisis. I mean, I've talked to landlords and developers that I know that the minute they heard or got a copy of the book, they say, oh, you've been living in, you know, Communist China too long. No, sorry, this is compassionate capitalism, I'm a capitalist. Hong Kong is probably one of the most capitalist countries in the world. Yes, it is part of Communist China, but it is capitalist from a business point of view, and there isn't a major American company or corporation that isn't based there doing business in China, and that's why I'm there. So it's a question of getting government at all levels to support the city, but it starts at the city level. And you can get the federal congressional delegation that represents not just Prescott, but the state of Arizona, to make some moves at the federal level. If they can, like I say, allocate $300 billion to farmers not to grow, what does it take to seed housing? It doesn't take much, it just takes the political will. I believe the housing crisis today is at a point where the political will is there, because everyone's looking for a solution. And yes, mine is a solution. I'm not in any way implying that it's the only solution, and I welcome any and all other solutions, to work together to basically solve the housing crisis, because it is a crisis.
Well, let me go back to your word "capitalism." I'm not opposed to capitalism either, but we've got to walk before we run, and one of the things I have said in enticing the private industry of building to get involved in this crisis, we all feel it, I don't care what you do, like you said, a barrister, I mean, whatever, everybody needs these workers to come into the community and contribute, not only to our tax base, but we need them to make our community work. But then there's the subject of capitalism. I haven't met one builder that can make this happen, say, okay, I'll do it for free. In fact, we had a builder, we had a contractor, have a contractor on our Workforce Housing Committee who did his own worksheet. He could not get a project to pencil out, even when the land was given to him on a temporary basis, not for free. It would be paid back, so it would be paybacked over the long haul, at a very minimal income of that. So the question has been, and I've had a lot of small-time developers here or builders in this community approach me on this issue, they can't afford to do it for free. But here's the other thing, and so I've said, well, there are grants, there are loans, there are things that you can do, that is going to be your profit. And I understand that the building materials now are 50, in some cases, 59% higher than they were several years ago, which is working against us, but the bottom line is they have to make a profit. But then here's the next question, we don't have the ability or the knowledge to go and apply for grants. In fact, their companies would not even, let me see, they wouldn't even be able to qualify for many of those grants, because of the structure with the 501s. And so then that's the stopping point. I think many of them want to be able to do it, because they're hurting, they need workers. They need workers to build things, and right now, they're importing a lot of them from out of the valley. But it's a real catch-22. It's how do you clear the way for them to get this job done, but also make a profit?
Well, that is why the tagline I use is "building affordable housing profitably." Nothing should be done for free. I talk about compassionate capitalism. We have to be compassionate capitalists, and everyone should make money. I don't believe anything should be done for free unless there is a tax incentive so that there is an upside for doing something for free, which is not really for free, it gives you a tax benefit. And that is why there have to be five stakeholders and why it has to be a partnership between the public and private sector, because as you well know, the private sector hires a lot of lobbyists to lobby in their interest. There is no reason these lobbyists can't be working in partnership with local government, state government, and even lobby the federal government for the funding and the grants needed by the small developers. It's doable, it's just a question of putting the right team together of these five stakeholders, starting with the city, but I don't expect, and I do not mention anywhere, that anything should be for free, because I don't believe in anything being given to anyone for free.
Thank you very much. I've got one last thing. What's your thought on the housing authority? Thank you for coming, by the way.
I think housing authorities are primarily government-run, and they need the private sector as partners to be better run. It's, as we evolve as humans and a society, we have to always look at what we have and how can we improve it. I believe the housing authority can be improved with partners from the private sector, the four others I mentioned.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to thank Peter for coming and giving us a presentation. We're going to have many more presentations from other presenters to help us make an informed decision, get the ball rolling. We're collecting information, but I believe we do have the political will here in Prescott to get some workforce housing, and if we don't do it ourselves, then the state is going to step up and start dictating to us how we can do zoning and where we can put the housing. So I think it's important that we remember that and that we can solve this problem ourselves. And we've got a project at the VA for housing homeless veterans, I think is an excellent example of public-private partnership, intra-governmental cooperation on the city, county, and federal level. So I just wanted to say thank you, and this conversation is going to continue, and that we will keep an open mind and look at all options and see which one is going to work best for the city of Prescott and also for the region. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present, and I'm happy to work with you and any and all other parties that want to contribute to the housing crisis solution.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Mr. DeCressel, thank you very much for your presentation here. You've given us a lot to think about. I think our Workforce Housing Committee will also have an opportunity to consider some of your proposals and ideas, and hopefully with the small models that we've been able to work here in the community and some of the bigger ones like the VA that are moving forward, we might be able to adopt some of your ideas and be able to have a successful effort in this workforce housing area. Thank you very much.
Happy to continue contributing in any way I can as a local taxpayer.